Why don't we call the order? It is 6:35. And with that, why don't we start off with some public input we have concerns?
Thank you. Mira Reynolds for Barichway here as the Chair of CPAC. And there are two things I wanted to discuss today. One is it's our understanding that students placed out of district are subject to the graduation requirements that you're discussing. And we were curious to find out more about, does your process include consultation with the out-of-district schools to ensure that students will be able to complete those requirements? Or is there a process to make sure that those concerns are addressed in IEP meetings? That was number one. Is that something we can answer now?
We can go through all of it and then we'll come back.
This next one's longer. The District and CPAC held a webinar and Q&amp;A last Thursday on the various school counselor positions, and there was a lot of great information conveyed regarding who, how, and when parents should approach when they have concerns or questions regarding their children's social, emotional, or mental health. First, I would like to say how excited CPAC is to have had such a successful collaboration with the District. As soon as we requested this, Cynthia Conant was on board and she made it happen. We're very grateful to feel like we're in a partnership with the District. CPACs and other districts do not always have similarly collaborative and respective relationships. Regarding the webinar, the beginning was recorded but not the Q&amp;A. The Q&amp;A included a lot of really helpful information that we would like to encourage the District to find a way to make available in other ways for all parents of all students. Narrowing things a bit to special ed, when you enter that world, parents are all of a sudden thrust into an environment with its own language and settings that parents are often not accustomed to being in. Anything that the District can do to help parents understand what services the school already has available or experience with is a benefit both to the parents and the District. If everyone is on the same page, we can all work more collaboratively and efficiently to get our children the support they need. It is CPAC's hope that we can start to make information more readily available for parents, beginning with the school counselor positions. That will be helpful for all caretakers, including those with special ed students.
For the second part first, you were saying that it was recorded except for the Q&amp;A. Is that right?
Yeah. The concern was that individuals wouldn't want to speak up and ask their questions if they knew, especially sensitive questions, if they knew that they were being recorded. But there was just a ton of great information that I learned a lot.
And what we want to do, and what I think you're asking is something like an FAQ or something that could be a living document as questions get answered, sort of something that becomes available?
Yeah. Yeah. I think this is a good place to start since it impacts the entire District and all parents, not just CPAC families.
No, that makes sense. I don't know if anybody wants to comment on that yet.
Sure, we can certainly bring that back to add those documents. As far as the first question, I mean, should we respond to that or should we wait till the presentation and then discuss it at that time?
Yeah. So, just to let you know, that's a hot topic for us too.
Okay.
So, we opened up the topic of graduation requirements publicly during our last meeting. And it was, I'm not going to say it was hotly contested. It was certainly a subject of debate across the board of what it should be. And so, it's going to happen again tonight. We're going to be, that's going to be probably the longest point of discussion, I would think, through the night. So, I know you've got to go, but if you do want to stay for a few minutes, if not, you can sort of watch it on the recording. But that is exactly the topic across the board. And when I say exactly the topic, graduation requirements generally, and then we can make sure we talk about that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If it's helpful, I can just say that there is a section that specifically speaks to students with disabilities who have been placed in out-of-district placements. So, that is a part of this. And this is language from the Department of that to make sure we're meeting that need. So, it's definitely a part of it. Yep.
And I would just say, I'm not sure when you have to go, but it's student input and then next on the agenda.
Any other public input? I can't see the, is it on? I don't know.
Yeah. I'll just say, while you're here, thank you so much for the session. I heard wonderful things about it, and I think we can continue to do that or record it or publicize it. I think it's great to get, our councils are doing some amazing things. We have an article in the transcript the week after next, all about school counseling as well. So, that's coming up from Mr. Rosa. I don't, I did see someone maybe trying to unmute, so I'm not sure. The person's no longer on the call though, so I'm not sure.
If anybody else wants to-
Is there anyone else who'd like to provide public comment?
Going once, going twice. It's old. Yeah, and you've got the mic. Excellent.
Okay, so moving on.
Go for it.
For like stuff around the school, starting off with notable academic matters, last Thursday the school held parent-teacher conferences. NHS, National Honor Society, has been holding tutoring after school. Academic Decathlon competed last week where Nora Deninger brought home second place for music and fourth place for art, while Kevin Gu was recognized for the team's highest score. This Wednesday, we're going to have a half-day, and then following that, there will be no school on Thursday and Friday, obviously for Thanksgiving break. Then for notable fine arts matters, of course, there's the Water for Elephants shows, which will be occurring the first week of December, I believe. Athletic matters, football lost this Friday in the Final Four in a good game against Shawshine Valley Tech. Girls cross-country competed at states. Boys cross-country runner Nalo Benedict also competed at states. And then fall cheerleaders competed at states. And then, of course, winter sports will be beginning December 1st. Next, Homecoming was hosted last Friday by Student Council at Olio, another successful event. It was great. Juniors and seniors have continued to be invited to meet with college representatives during Power Block. The mobile pull or plunge sign-ups are available. The plunge will be December 19th. And then this week is Spirit Week, leading up to the pep rally taking place this Wednesday. So, starting on Thursday to this Wednesday, there's been a bunch of spirit themes. Starting Thursday, there's Country vs. Country Club. Friday, High vs. Low Visibility. Today was Decades Day. Tomorrow will be Pop Culture. And then on Wednesday, each class will wear their class colors. The junior and senior class have been selling T-shirts for the pep rally. So, the junior class wears white T-shirts. The senior class wears black T-shirts. Also, last Friday, Massachusetts Senator Bruce Tar was here, and he recognized some of the sports teams and performing arts accomplishments from the previous year. And then finally, DECA has been holding a chocolate fundraiser on the schools, around the school where students have been selling individual chocolates for a dollar just to raise funds for the club. Now, moving on to my student work report. In my AP Computer Science Principles class, we've been tasked with making a multi-screen app. So, the focus has just been to link different pages of a website together and kind of come up with a final product. The project is meant to be educational and kind of make something that teaches the user about something. So, they kind of give us a little, what's it called? Kind of a little template, and then you just code it to whatever you want your user to learn about. So, for mine, I've been teaching whoever views the website about the original six because it's something I'm interested in. It's hockey, and hockey's starting soon. So, the user, it'd be good for, it's an application that you would show on your phone, so it's the screen size. So, you would start off and just go to the start page, click the button, and then you can go through each of the logos and click on them. This is still in progress, and we're going to be finishing up this project next Monday. But it's been something really fun to do in class.
So, when you say multi-screen, it could work on multiple devices, not just the fact that I've got two machines?
It can work on multiple devices, but also multi-screen meaning there's different pages, like the homepage, the like different screens, and just connecting them together.
Nice.
Yeah.
So, hockey and AP Computer Science.
Yep.
That's awesome.
What language are you writing in?
We're writing in HTML and CSS, also with JavaScript.
I wasn't going to say that, but I was thinking. What other interests do you have?
Other, I also do some other sports at the school, like soccer. I also do tennis. Other than that, especially like this, I just kind of like to code for fun. It's something I'm interested in and probably want to pursue in college. So, I think it's a good mix between the two.
So, three sports, computer science. We'd like to get people that have more free time on their hands. We haven't worked on that. That's awesome.
Yeah.
What questions you guys?
I think it's very cool, except for I'm very glad you showed the picture, and I recognize the ruins because I'm like, what are the original six? I was thinking like the original Broadway production of Six. So, very cool.
No, I think it's so impressive, and I think that it's nice that you can be in advanced computer science, but also do something you're interested in and, you know, combine your hockey and computer science. So, that's great.
Yes. Y'all?
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. You're welcome to stay if you want. Sure?
We've got coding to do.
Exactly. Thank you.
Good job. Thanks.
All right. Moving on. All right. So, that brings us to the fun of the second policy reading of IHF, local graduation requirements and competency determination. Say that 10 times fast. Do we want to, are we going to be looking up here? Do we want to sit out there? How do you guys want to do this? I'm fine here.
Want to do it here? What's wrong with me?
I'm here.
Good.
I'm in my favorite seat now.
I know, it's a good seat. With you. All right, let me just pull it up real quick. Excellent. So, where should we begin, you guys?
Well, we can kick off. Right, so, Policy Subcommittee met last week. Thanks Scott for some comments that we got and reviewed everything. I suppose, I mean, the major change here, obviously, there's some reorganization in thought of how to describe the graduation requirements and really linking the local graduation requirements and highlighting that first, right? And that defines the coursework that's expected to be completed, and then moving into the competency determination and really trying to definitively tie the competency determination, the specific courses that you need, and the fact that it's different than the coursework above, though there are the two components. And then you'll see in the bottom of the policy, the additional considerations, which includes the students with disabilities, ELL learners, and then late-enrolling students. I like, I think it's a much cleaner read. I know, so I think it meets a lot of what we discussed during the first reading. Jen, did you have any, anything else?
Yeah. No, I think, Scott, thank you for bringing up those points. I think they were, you know, they were all valid, and I think we tried to get them all in. And then it was, you know, I kept having it in the back of my head when you were saying, if a parent is reading this, if a parent is reading this. And I hope, and I think we made it, made it more clear for everyone.
Yeah. And again, and my thoughts were just, I don't think we were in disagreement about everything last time. I think we just, I didn't think the policy was clear enough. And so, I think, you know, parents, especially when it's talking about graduation, I think it should be super clear. And so, I appreciate you guys making the changes, and yeah, I think it's more clear. And I think even like at the last meeting, I think we were, when we were talking, we were trying to, we were trying to talk out what it meant. And I don't think, honestly, it didn't sound like the administration was still trying to talk out what it meant as well. And so, you know, it's just good to be clear in the policy. So, yeah, I looked at it, and it looks good to me now.
Did we make any changes that we need to go through? Because I've read through this, through the latest version, were there any changes from what Scott wrote that we need to review? I want to make sure. Have you read, have you read the most recent copy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Friedman?
Yeah.
So, we incorporated a lot of Mr. Buckley's changes. We'd already made a few changes ahead of the Policy Subcommittee meeting that Mr. Buckley had seen, so he included those in his version. And then I took the notes from his version and put them back in here. And there were a couple of places that we did, you know, I think what's up on the screen now, we did reverse this. So, it's sort of making the clear message, competency determination is passing course with a qualifying score and also passing an assessment within that course. We clarified assessment meaning the following. So, we identified the courses first, and then we clarified the assessment or an exam. We thought that that was something that would make it more clear. You know, I think assessment means maybe one thing to educators, and I think to parents and students, it's clear to let them know that this could be a final exam. But also, there's a possibility of a capstone portfolio or an equivalent measure. And then the pieces that we added, certainly here, we talked about the expectations, how they're going to be communicated. So, a parental orientation, in the program of studies, student handbook, and in the syllabus for each required course. And then we do have to do something distinct this year for students. So, we will be communicating something out in the early spring, just to make it more clear exactly what those expectations are. So, Mr. Clean's been working on this with all of our curriculum leaders at the high school and the high school administration. We met today, even just to go over lots of moving parts. We do have to submit something to the department by December, but we are working on this so that we have it all in place.
And to the point that was brought up earlier, there is a section under additional considerations for students with disabilities. Do we want to just pull that up?
Sure. So, I just want to draw attention to this line too, that we didn't have any before. So, students who did not meet these requirements will have the results reported to students and families, and a plan will be developed to monitor and support students of grades 10, 11, and 12, with additional opportunities to demonstrate mastery as outlined above. Similar to what we've always had in place with students who didn't pass MCAS, there was what was called the Education Proficiency Plan. It's going to be something very similar that we would be able to support students in supportive measures to pass. And this is different than the appeal process. This is within the process itself. So, there's a course that needs to be passed, there's an assessment, and then we have a lot of options, you know, for credit recovery and for support in passing those other measures. So, we would make sure to communicate that out to students as outlined here. And then for students with disabilities, it absolutely would be a part of the conversation through the IP process. And interestingly, through COVID, there's been a lot of communication without a district because there were so many different requirements, so many different ways to meet. It's actually very similar to what they're doing now because without MCAS, we had to go into out-of-district classes, talk, out-of-district programs, have conversations as to whether the course they took didn't meet the requirements of biology, didn't meet the requirements of this. And if it did, then we would get that information back, and we could report that to the state for out-of-district students. So, it's most likely going to be a very similar process with the courses that they have out of district. This is also language that, I believe, Sean, we've used the language that was shared out from the collaboratives for this, right?
The template for the, that is the same chair.
Yeah. So, the collaboratives all came up with template language that we've all incorporated into our, into our platforms. So, it really speaks to what they feel works well with their students, which, you know, every case is individual outside of the box, and so this language is guided by the collaboratives.
I guess my only question on this part of it is, it makes sense that students, to get a diploma from North Reading, they'd have to meet North Reading's competency determination. But just in practice, because competency determination is, you know, us saying that the court, that you've met the course requirements, but it's not North Reading's course. And so, to have, I just don't know how in practice it would work where like North Reading has to say that you meet our requirements, even though it's their course and their teacher's doing it. Like, how does that work in practice?
We would have to determine the equivalence. So, we would, we would have to meet with them, just like we did through COVID, and say, is, you know, this is the course that counts. Is the course that you're offering equivalent to that? And if they say yes, then we would talk about what measures do you have that we could find equivalent to our measures. In some cases, it might be someone taking our assessment. In some cases, it might be that they demonstrate another, another way to get there. And it would be case by case. But that's exactly what we did through COVID.
Okay. And again, like we talked about last meeting, this is the policy. There'll still be, there's more to be fleshed out that won't be in the policy itself. This is just kind of the overarching requirements. And so, there'll be, in practice, like how to put it in practice, there'll be a lot more clarifying information outside of the policy.
At the school level, yeah.
Yeah. It's just, it's just weird that like they'll have the course and then we're, yeah, I understand that.
I assume, just looking at the competency determination as part of the IEP team transition planning, that is something that, I assume, Scott, that this could be really tailored to every individual, and that is very clear. I'm curious, like, that's laid out as part of the IEP as the graduation requirements if it's an out-of-district. So, everyone knows what to expect and goes into it knowing what to expect.
And in district as well. You know, as students are transitioning into a class in ninth grade, that class is called Algebra, you know, we've talked about this quite a bit. We want to make sure that all students in all of those courses have that opportunity. And if, if they, if they feel that they've done well in the course, and then they want to take the assessment, then that's something that they'd be able to do. But we would have those conversations through transition planning meetings.
Do you have any recollection, without using a specific example, has this ever, like, presented a problem? Have you ever hit a snag with requirements that you were able to work through or?
Are you thinking with MCAS or?
No, I'm more still focusing on, on students with disability out of district.
Yeah. I mean, typically, I mean, this has never happened before. So, with MCAS, I think there's always students who weren't able to pass MCAS that might have had an alternative pathway. And we've tried, there's, you know, MCAS had a, an appeal process. And I know, was it two years ago, Mr. Clean, that we went through the appeal process with the state to basically say, this student has done amazing things in the classroom, they're not able to pass that MCAS test, but is there a way to get in? So, we've, we've done that. That was an in-district student. And so, I think there are similar pathways within that number three there, the equivalent measure. And then also, there is that appeal process as well. But we're, we're hopeful that within that, within those three up top, we'll really be able to, to make it work for, for students that are able to demonstrate. Because there are certainly students who are on the bubble, and we want to give them every opportunity.
So, one more question. So, comment first. I mean, I think, I think the most important thing you added, Dr. Daly, you called out, which was, we had talked about making sure it's reported to the parents and specifically saying they have the additional chance to pass it, to meet the competency determination. But I guess the thing, the thing to call out, my question, is the appeals process. It's just, I guess it's interesting to me that the principal is the, is the final determinant of that, as opposed to like the assistant superintendent or superintendent or, no, it's, again, I'm just curious why it is. Is that, is that Desi's suggestion?
Yeah, the principal is who grants the high school diplomas and the graduation plans. So, it's, it makes sense that it's consistent with the law, that it's, that's who makes those, you know, that's like at graduation, they confer, they do those pieces. I would, Mr. Clean also, this language is from the council through MASC too. So, I mean, that's, it's pretty consistent. But it's really, it's really the high school principal that makes the determination of graduation.
I was wondering, because principal's signature's on there, but your signature's as well, and so I was just curious why it was-
I do sign the diploma, yeah. But they make the decision. They're the ones that, they turn them over to me and say, these are the students that are able to graduate. I don't, I don't get to-
It's just a free autograph.
I don't get to say, hey, this person really should make it or something. It's really up to them, meeting the principal's, the principal's requirements.
Yeah, exactly. Anybody else? Anything? A couple of things. Can I get a nice echo? I very much like how we've, we've balanced the, a deterministic solution, a simple and easy-to-understand deterministic solution. If you do this and you do that, then here's the outcome. But also leave open the possibility, possibility of flexibility, a necessary flexibility for instances that they need it. And I think that's great. My only question, and I think I know the answer, but I'll ask it. How does this compare to what other districts are writing? Do we know how this, and I know it's sort of all over the map. And my point in asking it, and we sort of discussed it last time, was just to find out that we're not like one of the outliers. We know some of the outliers are like really, you know, they're pretty obvious, but I'm pretty sure we're not. And that's what I wanted to get at.
Could I ask Mr. Clean to share anything that you'd like to-
Yeah.
The policy updates, the law, what detail, directions, what type of regulations?
And, and just so people understand who might be listening, I didn't want it to, Dr. Daly mentioned it, this has to get turned into the state. The state will then collect these across the state. State will collect across the state, bad sentence. But they will then review these plans and then synthesize them, if I'm correct. Is that, is that roughly right? Yeah, so-
And they will give us feedback. If we're missing a component, you know, there's, I believe, seven elements that it has to have. So, I believe we have all those pieces in here. And, you know, if we're, if we're missing something, they will let us know.
Right.
You know, I would say that we, again, used model language for a lot of this and replaced some of our existing language from last year and from our school, school program of studies. I think from other superintendents I've spoken with, I think everyone is doing at least the courses. I think the fact that we're also including another measure as well, that it's not just passing a course, that's a little bit more than that, I think we are, I'm not aware of anyone that's doing much more than that. So, I feel like we're in the top piece of what is being expected, the top, top tier.
That's great.
I think the largest discrepancy you see is actually the graduation requirement.
Right.
Yeah.
It's where we align the mass core, and many districts don't require four years of science or computer based work.
Right. We exceed mass core in science and social studies, especially the four years of social studies, right? That's pretty uncommon. So, we already exceed in those areas.
This is great. And the reason I'm, I'm bringing that up and reinforcing it is so people understand, one, every district is doing this. Two, all districts have to turn this into the state, and we are well within or above the standards that are going on across the state. And final point here is that it's, once we turn it in, it's not done. This will go on for a year, two years, three years, while the state sort of figures out the new world we live in past MCAS as a requirement. So, that, this is gonna, this will come up in future sessions slash years as it evolves.
Jeff, one more comment?
Yeah.
So, it just, I want to thank Dr. Daly and Mr. Clean for drafting the policy. I know, you know, starting something that hasn't been done before is hard. So, I appreciate the time you put into it. I know we'll probably continue to disagree on MCAS overall, but I just think, I don't know, even if there were alternate paths in the past, I think it's good that the policy is more clear about it. Because I think as a parent, in the past, it was just like, pass MCAS, or there's some other alternative, and it wasn't very clear. So, even though it was more work to do and a little bit of a pain in the butt, I do think that it was good that those alternate paths are laid out a little bit more detail now. And so, you know, whether we agree or disagree on overall the MCAS, I think the policy is actually pretty good in terms of, you know, laying it out in more detail. So, appreciate that.
I just want to thank you guys for working with our outlier in this alone. So, Michelle Conley, and all her previous leaders, who, you know, all the past years, there's a lot of work, to have aligned all the standards that we want to meet, and to make sure we're aware of.
A pleasure to work with all of them. I'm going to finish before you bring that to me. I'm good like that.
If I could, it's not just the past few, I mean, it's been since-
Months.
You know, all summer, it's been a big lift for high school. You know, even when we did our leadership retreat, it was sort of, you know, there's a message for everyone, and then high school, you got to stay after a little bit because we got to talk about this CD thing. It's a big, it's a big lift. You know, I'll say here what I said today as well, you know, we really, I really do believe that if we have good final assessments and well-designed courses, that we're going to be able to extract this information. Students should be able to demonstrate mastery in their courses. We're really asking them to demonstrate at least partially meeting mastery. I think for, just like with MCAS, for the vast majority of our students, that's going to work through the system. So, I hope that it doesn't become, you know, like even, we talked about even the labeling of it, you know, it's, it's a part of the final exam. It's not going to be, today you're taking- It's not gonna be, today you're taking the CD. Like, I don't want it to be, not, instead of, I don't want the, the pressure and the stakes to be as high. I know that's inevitable in some ways, but I would hope that the stakes and the stress would be equivalent to what it always is with the final. Because the final exam should be very important to measure what's in that course. And we're just saying, these are the most important courses of all our, our program that students have to pass. And these are the assessments that help measure whether students are actually achieving in that course. It's the course grade and it's the final. So I think that message is clear and our teachers have it. We're gonna make sure that our students have it as well. I understand that just the high stakes nature of anything makes it, makes everyone's blood pressure go up a little bit. But the more we can just keep the focus on this is what we're always doing, we just have great, you know, final exams that are aligned to standards. Students should be learning throughout the course and they should be able to demonstrate that. And then as always, similar with MCAS, there will be a, a small number of students that need extra support or that needs some additional measures that we're gonna bring into place and we will continue to do that. So we don't see this drastically changing anything in terms of who's eligible to, to graduate. We want to continue to support all students to receive their CD through the offerings that we have.
I thi- I think, I think what, the, the complaints I used to hear about MCAS were, yes, you know, it's, it's high stakes, but also the second part of it was that I'd, I'd hear that teachers are gonna teach, they have to teach to the test. You know, that we're teaching to the standard, the state test, whatever. Okay, now you're teaching to the course. You're teaching to the course that they designed, that they're a part of. So they're teaching what they want to be teaching. And so that is, I think, a big shift. We're not teaching to a statewide test anymore. We're teaching to the curriculum that the teacher helped put together, which I think is a, could be a big difference, you know, and to pass it, like, you know, you don't have to wait for the MCAS to be available again. There's nothing that says you have to take this three months later or six months later or whatever. Like, it, it allows you to, you know, figure out with that student when they, when they can demonstrate that. And so I think there is a lot of additional flexibility contained within this now, and so.
With the local control, we, we have a lot, we talked about today, you know, we had some conversations today about what the future could look like for a cohort who doesn't pass, what do we do? And absolutely, there's a lot more flex, we're not waiting till November for the retest or next spring. We can have entry points. So there, there is that piece. And again, with the teaching of the test, I do believe what I always say too is the test measures our standards, measures our curriculum. We're always teaching our curriculum. And if we're doing those things well, the test will take care of itself. I think it's the same thing. This isn't just another check and balance of our system. It's an accountability measure. Which doesn't, which doesn't hurt. And just to be clear too, it's standardized across the class, similar to MCAS. So the honors, college prep, everyone is taking the, the questions we're looking at. Students are held to the same standard, just like with MCAS. And so, you know, because we're saying this is mastery, this is what it needs to look like. Doesn't mean you have to be perfect on it, but it, the, the assessment, the questions we're gonna look at to say, this is the standard, are gonna be the same. And whatever that threshold is for the qualifying score, we will pass that along to everyone.
Any other questions? Discussion? All right, I think we wanna have a motion to approve the second reading.
Move to approve the second reading of policy IHF, the local graduation requirements and competency determination.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, approve five zero. Nice, well done, everybody. Well done. Thank you, thank you guys.
Especially, this has been Mr. Clean's project, so I want to give him a special shout out here.
Excellent.
Thank you.
And now it's done. That's it, that's it. All that work and that's it. Okay, why don't we go on to new business, the fiscal year twenty-six budget updates?
Thank you. So we continue to monitor the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget and are reviewing both expenses and the payroll information on a, you know, weekly, monthly basis. There's not a lot of new information and new trends in the November report, reflecting activity through the middle of November from the, the October report. We're seeing balances in the special education tuition account, mainly because of the steps that we took last year to use some year-end funds to prepay special education tuitions. We've done, done do that every year. Certainly, you know, seeing a need to provide some additional academic support tutoring services and those have been reflected and encumbered on, in the, in the report. There are some balances, as I've reported in the past, in some of the instructional expense accounts, some of the, um, supply accounts. But we are continuing to, you know, purchase those supplies and encumber funds as needs arise throughout the school year. Payroll accounts are trending and, uh, according to the budget, there's no areas of concern. We will monitor our leaves of absences and our substitute budgets as we typically do on a weekly basis, but those are trending to be within budget. So really, at this point in the year, there's nothing that's really out, too much out of the ordinary of what we expected to be at this, you know, at this point in the fiscal year.
That's good news. Couple of questions, Mr. Reuben?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Conley, just two quick things. One, um, last year this time, we had a lot of out of district placements we hadn't anticipated. I know when we were doing the budget last year, there were still some questions about a few of them.
Yep.
Did we land okay with, with, with those placements? Because last year at October town meeting, we actually had to get more funding.
Correct.
So many out of districts. I'm just curious where we're at.
So we've landed okay with those. There are, there's definitely a, a few, um, you know, potentials that we're kind of monitoring and evaluating. There are potentials at this point. Um, but those that came arise, you know, last year, we've budgeted for them this year. And, um, those are part of the budget at this point.
And then the last one, I think you answered this at the end of last fiscal year. I apologize if I'm repeating myself, but did we, with those increased costs at the end of last year, did we end up meeting the threshold for extraordinary where you can get the?
Yes, we did.
Oh, we did?
So we met extraordinary at the end of last year. So we got an additional one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars.
And would that apply to this year's budget then?
So that'd be applied, that has, that has to be spent by June thirtieth of last year.
Okay, so it was applied to last year's.
So that was spent, correct.
I mean, that's good news, but bad news, but.
Right. I mean, as we get into the fiscal year twenty twenty-seven budget, you'll see how some of these costs kind of roll over and, and play a factor as we look at next year. Some of the higher baseline of special ed costs that do qualify for circuit breaker.
Thank you.
Ready?
Any questions?
Any other questions?
As always, this is awesome. This is great. Thank you.
Great.
And again, my little commentary on all this for anybody who might be watching, it's this level of fiscal oversight that allows us to get, make detailed decisions as we move into this year and as we start looking toward the ne- next fiscal year. Not all districts have this. So we very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep. Great, thank you. Appreciate that.
Excellent. Uh, why don't we, uh, there's no, there's no motion that's needed on this. So why don't we get into the capital improvement plan presentation?
Great. So this evening, we do have the capital improvement plan, you know, presentation and, and updates that we would, uh, are gonna kind of walk through. We are hoping for some consensus and approval this evening so we can kind of move forward with the capital improvements plan committee and, and send in our requests. So I'm gonna actually speak to the PowerPoint that I can, it was a PowerPoint in the packet as well. If you want to pull that up. No, I have a, I, I just want it for the people at home watching.
Yeah.
I evil it to myself too, if you want me to. So what I wanted to do is kind of walk through some of the updates of the things that we have got approved last, last year. So everyone at home can, can see what we've completed. That one.
Yep. Great.
Okay. I can drive if you want.
Thank you.
So some of the agenda we're gonna cover, we'll definitely get into a review of the capital projects that were approved this past summer. So you can see some updates and some photos of what we were able to get completed. And then we are gonna focus on the fiscal year twenty twenty-seven requests for next year and future capital needs. It'll certainly include time for discussion and questions. Here's what we were able to complete this summer. This is phase two of the hood school roof project, which, which did include, so this is not, it's reflecting here and not up here. Which did include, um, the ceiling and the coating of the major areas of the roof. Excellent. So you can see some photos of what got done. So this got completed probably when into September. But there was certainly, um, a lot of progress that was made, not without, you know, some, some issues that we had to work through with the contractor in some areas of the roof, but, um, they've been pretty responsive. So again, these were like coating the larger areas of the roof, the main areas of the roof, roof A, B, C, and D. Next year would be, as you get, we'll get in, I'll get into the other areas of the roof. It was a two-year project. These were the, um, middle school interactive board replacements. We did a high school two years ago and middle school this year. So that's a similar board that was replaced in all the, in the entire middle school. So we're definitely, you know, pleased to see some of these updates, these projects that were completed. So as we look to, um, the future, this is, these are our requests. Our three-year request that we'd be, we would be submitting or presenting this, this, this evening for submission into the capital improvement planning committee. So we have tried, and it should actually say fiscal twenty-seven through twenty-nine. We have tried to, um, look at some big ticket items and spread those around when, when, when appropriate in the facilities, which you'll, we'll, I'll get into, um, to not have any really high-ticket item in, in one particular year. What's not included in this projection is it, is the modular project, so that, we've talked about that at town meeting, that that's gonna be pulled out. Not part of the capital improvement plan presentation, given the high costs, but that was a, a discussion at this June's town meeting, this fall, in this, in the fall. And we would, um, anticipate knowing some, some news about where that project stands with the MSBA very, very shortly. And then we would update the committee as, as that progress progresses forward. So here's our FY twenty-seven priority order, and I'm gonna get into some detail on these projects. But top priority, uh, by the administration's recommendation would be to continue with the phasing project, the hood school phase three. And again, that would be the areas F, G, H, I, N, G, A, the, the kind of the smaller areas of that project. We estimate that to be about remaining four hundred thousand dollars to do that. There is a need for device replacements. I'll get into this project in a little bit more detail, of seventy-five thousand dollars to replace some aging student devices. That's not the full need, but that would be the left over need based on some remaining funds that we do have with the airmark grants, remaining devices that we've been able to, to purchase through, through grants, um, this year. So this would be the need for next year. We've talked, what's kind of new on this that hasn't been on previous requests is we did have some meetings with recreation, you know, Proxion Recreation Director Marty Tilton, the, the athletic director, and members of the track coaching team. And there's definitely a concern around the surface of the track and not letting that get too much more worn and torn than it, than it currently is. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about that project. There's definitely interest in purchasing a new multi-function school activity bus. Those have served the athletic department well and the extracurriculars well. The fine arts and performing arts program certainly could, could have a need there. So I will discuss that project. And then more recently, we're still gathering some information, but there's a need to address some, um, just really equipment that's kind of reached the end of its useful life, given that this project, this building now is ten years old in the TV studio equipment at the middle school. So I'll, I'll discuss that project. So hood school roof phase three, um, I think, you know, we really want to just complete this last remaining sections of the roof to seal and coat those. That would allow the district to have their ten-year warranty, um, on this roof, which was the goal of the project. And this is what would be required to complete that section of the roof. But again, the estimate is about four hundred thousand dollars.
Mr. Conley, just one question?
Yes.
Is there any, I'm not suggesting we wouldn't do this, but like, is there any time limitations when we have to do it by, since it is an additional phase or?
There's no, I haven't, again, this was all laid out as a three-year project to kind of take the, the drywall and the type.
But there's nothing like, if, if, for some reason it didn't get done, or like, it can't be split less than this, right? This would all be one.
Yeah.
And it would, and, and there's not like, like, if it didn't happen this year, for example, so, there's not like, there's not like open things that we need to like.
No, correct. There's no, there's no immediate, um, thing, nothing like that.
I'm not suggesting we don't need to do it. I'm just, I just wanted to make sure there's no time limitation.
Correct. Just for long, uh, us getting that warranty, uh, as well. Any more questions on the hood school?
Wait, just to make sure I'm clear on that, could, this would, if we, if this wasn't done, would that impact the warranty of the existing roof that has been replaced or no?
Correct, yes. We, it's, once the project is fully completed is when we, we see that, that certification, that warranty. That's why we wanted to get this done in this timeline. Correct. So as I mentioned earlier, we've been able to leverage for a number of years now, some, some funding that we have received during that COVID-nineteen funding period. Through the Representative Brad Jones's office, we've had a lot of state airmark funding, um, for consecutive years that helped with this need. Those funds really are no longer available to support this need as we look for, look past FY twenty-seven. So seventy-five thousand dollars would be sort of what is needed to come from capital in combination with these, with the remaining grant funds for replacement of these student devices to support the, the grades that would be needed, that would be coming online. That is about a little bit of a grade and a quarter, about two-hundred-and-thirty devices at three-hundred-and-twenty-five per device, which is really the need for next year. Beyond next year, what we see happening is we have to go back to supporting two full grades, which has really been about three-hundred-and-eighty devices at our current enrollment. So the need does increase back up to a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. But for this year, because we have some devices that were purchased with, that those airmark funds, we can lower it to seventy-five thousand.
And what's the timeline to get the devices right now? I know during COVID it was a mess, but.
Uh, they come in pretty quick. Yeah, there's no issue there. In a few weeks. So that's sort of the, what our plan is for the student devices. There's always a chance we'll, we'll continue to request and lobby for continued state funding. And if that's the case, we can always, you know, adjust and reduce these, this allotment in future years. So with the track and again, the tennis, um, we had certainly concerns were raised to us last year. We wanted to follow through on that this fall. So we did bring a very replica company, um, out this, this fall, Cape and Island Track and Tennis Company to assess the condition and provide some proposals. So to preserve this definitely, as you can see on the track, significant wear and tear and decay and cracking is evident, particularly in some of these areas, these high-traffic areas. So to preserve the life expectancy, the integrity of these, of these surfaces, we definitely feel like, certainly for the track, there's a need to spray and repair those, these key areas to extend its life and really prevent further decay and, um, breakdown of those tracks, which could prevent us from having to host state meets that we've been able to do, um, over the last number of years. The tennis courts are similarly are just in, certainly difficult condition. We had an opportunity to get up there and assess, assess those courts, um, and those are certainly in need of attention as well. So what we have proposed in the capital plan, once we got the proposals, was to do this over a period of two years, addressing the, the track surface in the summer, next, next summer and at fiscal twenty-seven, uh, which was about a hundred-and-eighty-five thousand. And then because the tennis repair proposal came in a little bit higher than we initially expected, it's at a hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. We would then address that the following, the following summer. So do this over two years. We've certainly, certainly with the track, we've discussed and with the tennis, both these surfaces, we've gotten certainly support from Marty Tilton and the Proxion Recreation Committee, as they would need to be on board as some of this falls under their jurisdiction and as well as the Hillview Commission. So they are aware that we feel like, you know, there's a lot of school use on these surfaces. And we want to bring this forward to get this on the radar of the capital improvement planning committee. We're certainly hoping when that process occurs, that it will be, it will certainly emerge in terms of sort of a joint request with the support of recreation and park, Proxion Recreation, as well as the Hillview Commission.
Yeah, I, I would argue it's not just school use for, for.
Yeah, I, I would argue it's not just school use for, for any of these facilities.
Right.
Uh, but, but agreed.
Well, and, and more than that, my, my only question was going to be about the ownership, because I don't think the school owned. Like, I know, I know the turf field, the school doesn't own it, so when?
Right, so we, so we would have to have the Hillview Commission support their request.
Do they own both the track and the tennis courts, or the tennis courts owned it? What was that?
I think it's inside.
Yeah. I don't know if they own the tennis.
But what about the tennis court, though?
Tennis is not.
No, so yeah.
The tennis would be purely on the school. The track would be a joint, a joint project.
A joint project, um, that the Hillview Commission would have to support.
And I understand that the Parks and Rec might run tennis court, you know, tennis, tennis classes as well, so I'm sure they would be in support of it, but technically the tennis courts are the school's responsibility and the.
That's correct.
Ten, this track is Hillview.
Yeah, I would, I would imagine when we bring this forward to CIPC, it might be chosen to join.
Right.
Correct, yeah.
Would there any, be any cost savings if, if they were done at the same time, if it's the same company or not really?
Um, I have, they haven't, they haven't shared that, yeah. So, right, okay.
Do, do we know how long, I mean, it's probably premature to ask this, do we know how, do we know how long, uh?
It preserves the life and?
Well, it's how long, what will we get out of it and how long it would take to do it. So in other words, are we talking about a full season? Do we have to schedule around it? Now we're talking transportation, all that.
Yeah, the, this could be done over, this would be a summer project, um, about six weeks.
Okay.
So we would, it would impact potentially some of the, the groups that use the, the turf field in the summer, the, the, um, recreation groups, as well as we have some, you know, rental groups that do some, some work there, but that, that should be it.
Okay.
About the same amount of time to open a bridge in North Running.
Yeah.
See, really? Is that necessary?
Mr. Connolly, I just have a quick question, which is kind of unrelated, but kind of related, um, on, in terms of the track, just because I think community members asked me in the past, I feel like this is a good time to ask. What is the policy, um, if you don't really think of this, of use for the track? Um, especially as there, as the community is really focused on an intergenerational, or talking about a center like that, and maybe, and, and walking surface or walking locations are of interest, what, what's the clear policy on?
During the school day, is that what you're asking?
Using the track? Is it not during the school day, or?
So.
Is it?
Yeah, you want, I've, I mean, I've definitely seen it in you.
Yeah.
It being used.
Would be nice to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't, the, the facilities during the school day are not used by the public. Tennis courts, for example, the, the track, I think if we're not down there, people use it all the time, which is fine. Our, our phys ed classes might speak to people when they're there.
So that's to me like super unclear to, to the community, say, if somebody wants to use on a regular basis and plan on it for a safe place to walk. That sometimes they may be asked to leave and sometimes they may not. I feel like that would be very useful. I know this is not really the direction.
No, I understand what you're saying.
I think when we're talking about asking people for more, for money, for whatever, it's really good to know, like, for what, what, what the community can use it or whether they can use it when not, because that's a big expense that if it benefits everybody, I think it's a lot easier to digest.
It's, I think it's post-it, but we can look at that. It's just, it's a safety thing.
Of course.
You know, the kids are at school, they.
Right.
So it's sort of like, kids aren't down there, you look the other way, but technically it's not supposed to be used.
Well, it's not our, it's not our, it's the town's property, but, so we have an arrangement to use it for the phys ed classes during the school day, or for sport events and the other things. So during those periods, it's not.
Right, okay.
Do you know the cost roughly of what it would take for a replacement, when you're putting on balance, the repair versus a replacement?
Like a full replacement? So a full, full sort of gut replacement of that track, we're, we're talking eight-hundred thousand dollars, close to, to plus, for, actually for both, for the tennis courts as well.
Each or combined?
Uh, each, each.
And is this the, the one eighty-five in our packet, is that just for the track, or is that for the track?
That is just for the track.
Just for the track, okay.
So the, the, actually, the tennis would be one ninety-five.
Okay.
All right. Yep.
Tennis is even more expensive.
I know, we were actually surprised at that initially.
Yeah.
So.
Sorry, did I miss this? Did you, I think Jeff asked, did you, how long will it preserve the?
So it should be another ten years.
Ten years, okay.
Yeah. Okay. The next request is, we, as we spoke of earlier, we have two current multi-function school activity buses, which really have helped the district in a variety of ways, certainly in athletics, extracurriculars. We're just really seeing a need, uh, for a third vehicle. You know, the performing arts program somehow sometimes is sort of needs to use it, but it works by the athletics, so we'd like to use it and to help them as well. So having a third, access to a third vehicle that is, again, a, a fifteen-passenger, um, would greatly allow all of these departments that would like access to this, including the fine arts and performing arts programs, to be able to have a veh, a vehicle needed when, and not kind of compete with athletics as much as they are currently. So they've, in speaking with that department, I think the idea is that this vehicle really goes for, you know, closer to eighty thousand dollars. So we would look to, similar to what we did with the athletic, athletic programs several years ago when we purchased the two vehicles, is that they would support, um, you know, somewhere in the range of about twenty-five to thirty thousand, um, off the cost of this vehicle. And then we would look to go, we're looking to go to the CIPC for the remainder, so. And there was a time these vehicles cost about fifty thousand dollars. I think I said, I might have said eighty, I think it's more like between around seventy to seventy-five thousand, so. We would look for the performing arts program to endorse about twenty-five to thirty thousand of that, and then the remaining forty thousand, we would typically, what, which is what we did, you know, with the athletics and the other two vehicles, would be a request to the capital improvement planning committee. But certainly, it is definitely has been sort of a, you know, maybe a three-year payback on these vehicles, because the new cost for the contractor is still significantly expensive, about five hundred dollars per run, um, to have access to this and cut down the number of runs annually. Um, as I mentioned here, it could, the savings could be about twenty thousand dollars annually. So we're looking at a three, maybe close to a three-year payback.
That was my question, is what's the payback in? The, these are the sorts of things that I wonder, even if they're not approved by CIPC, I wonder if there's a way we could do it, where we could use the savings to, you know, to buy it, because we've, the fund, are the funds budgeted? The, the savings, is it budgeted, or are they coming out of performing arts fees, you know, like if, if they don't have this, where, where are those fees coming from right now? Is it from our budget, or is it from performing arts?
So the savings, yes, the savings would essentially assist the performing arts, you know, revolving accounts budget and what their expenditure allotments of that, and so it would, the savings would kind of roll back into those revolving accounts, similarly as, as what they did to the athletics. And we did budget for that savings in athletics.
And is there, I, I know one of the other challenges they've had is sometimes they're renting U-Hauls and things like that.
Yes.
This vehicle is not going to replace that, I mean, like, there's nothing that could be like removable sheet seats or something like that if they needed?
No.
Okay.
Uh, we did have a, we did have a ten, ten-passenger vehicle that, um, they had access to over the last year, and it was sort of, was going to be traded in through the purchase of another special education van, but we allowed them to kind of keep it going for, to see how long we can keep that going for them. It got to the point where like the, the condition of that vehicle was not even going to pass inspection and allow us to, to meet the, the need, so that was taken offline.
So this is replacing a vehicle as well, though?
Correct. Yeah.
For these trips, how does the, the driver work?
So the driver has typically been a teacher, a staff member, and they just need a valid driver's license for that.
It's not a seventeen.
Not a seventeen, correct.
It's you, Tina.
So Patrick and I visited the TV studio at the middle school equipment along with Principal O'Connell today and spoke with the teacher and got a sense of some of the shortcomings and some of the, that equipment that has been, uh, certainly breaking down, um, more frequently over the last few years as it kind of reaches, you know, ten-plus years of life. Um, certainly the, the service, the internet connections, um, are all in need of an, of an upgrade, and a lot of this equipment just needs to be replaced. Uh, as I mentioned, we're looking at, you know, ten, more than ten years old at this point. There, most cases, they're not going to be supported by the current vendors or the vendors that install them, just because they're that, they're that old at this point. And what it's really happening, and it's really impacting the experience by the, the students that are working in these class, these classes with this TV studio, they're not able to do, you know, a full, uh, production and broadcast and do a lot of the things that we would love for them to do, to have the full capabilities of what that space was intended for. So it's definitely, we've gotten to the point where it, it needs attention. Uh, we do, we are in the process of having some vendors kind of come out and, and, and properly spec it out and, and propose a, uh, you know, cost for, for this replacement and upgrade. We haven't received that yet, so we've kind of estimated it could be up to the fifty thousand dollars that's included here. But I, what the plan would be is once, if we do, once we do receive that, we would update the CIPC and what that amount is. That makes sense, I agree. So that, those really, those five requests, I believe, would be what we would go to the capital improvement planning committee for next year. And then as we look towards the future for technology, there's certainly, as I mentioned earlier, an ongoing need now to support a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars needed to support two grades of devices, um, ongoing. There is a need every five years or so to replace secondary staff devices, and then followed by elementary staff devices, based on the, to have an allotment of funds for that. We've been able to receive a lot of the airmark and grant funds that have helped us do that, so we, and this year, we actually have a, a, a good allotment of some grant funds that we're going to be able to do the majority of our need with that, that funding, so. It's a need and it's on here, but it's not something that we need to request to the CIPC, because there are grant funding for that right now, available. We're, it's kind of gathering this, as hard as the press this morning, meeting with some, the technology staff about the status of the, the wireless access points and the infrastructure at the elementary schools. We've always had this as a fiscal twenty-eight project on this plan, where they would be about ten, ten years old at that, at that point. We're currently going to investigate whether that, that end of life may be a little bit sooner and what that means for service, but we still believe that it, they definitely need to be addressed and, um, we're hoping that fiscal year twenty-eight, that would be the year to do that. Future vehicle needs is sort of always a year that we just try to have a vehicle replacement. Currently, what's next for next year, or I'm sorry, fiscal twenty-eight, would be the replacement of the Ford F-50 utility rack truck. That's really the third vehicle in that fleet, very important for grounds maintenance, and the third vehicle for snow removal, so it is important. And then the two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and sixteen, in consecutive years, we'd be looking to replace those vehicles as they approach. Really, you know, more than twelve-plus years old at that point. From a facility standpoint, the modular unit, um, again, as I mentioned earlier, we put that on for last year, and then we've gotten involved with the MSBA through the statement of interest process, they've come out, they've visited, they've done their, their site reviews, and we are just waiting to see if we'll be invited in to their feasibility studies, come back, design phase. We'll know that very, very shortly. Yep. The gym floor, every ten years or so, we have realized needs a much larger finishing, uh, coating and refinishing, so that, the plan would be to address that in fiscal year twenty-eight. The wastewater treatment plants, membranes, every seven or eight years need to be replaced. Now, again, this, this could become sort of a town-wide expense.
That should be, shouldn't be on the scores, yeah.
So I think this is changing, because as the town begins to, for the first time, I think the revenue plan next year would address that, so we would, we would modify this. But I think it's good to at least alert the CIPC that this is a need, and that need could be changing as a town, a town expense, but it's, it's a need that they have to be aware of. Because right now, I don't, I'm not confident that they know enough about the maintenance of that plant, that this is a seven, every seven-year expense. The elementary window replacements, we want to resume, um, the BMS system at the hood school. Now, again, these, those projects could become part of some larger MSBA project at the hood school, so there could be some, some changes here as well. Correct, yeah.
Just to clarify that, they would be a necessary if we're going to go for that. Let's, assuming we get approved, and assuming that is in scope of, of the repairs that are needed, or that they identify as needed, we would have to do that as part of the program. It's not like an optional thing.
Correct.
Right, right.
That's what I understand.
Yeah.
I mean, there would be some things that would be code, we would have.
Correct.
And then because we're doing that, it would be advantageous to be able to do everything that we can do.
Yeah.
Yep. And the field lighting has, has been discussed. Uh, we thought we had a plan for that, um, it kind of fell through, but we, again, have put it in the outer years to continue that conversation. Um, I think there would be a desire to somehow figure out some, maybe some outside funding there, but we want to continue to have that conversation. So that is the plan, I guess I'll open it up to questions and comments. Again, so we would want to submit, we submit three years of data to the capital improvement planning committee, even though we, our plan is all, was also included in your packet, really, um, projects out five years. Any questions?
Yeah. No. I have a few thoughts, and, um, so why are the windows, I thought we were trying to do the windows at the little school earlier than this?
That's where I was going to go.
I thought, I thought we were trying to do the windows earlier than this, like, and it seemed like there was, did all the ones that were really?
We did a lot of them.
We did a lot of them, I think, I think we wanted to just kind of focus on some of these other items and then resume that the following year.
So the ones that are the worst have all been replaced and we're okay with that? Okay.
Yeah.
Then I guess, I guess overall, uh, second question, I know you mentioned on the bus that the athletics split it last time?
Yes.
So you didn't put the full request into the CIPC for that bus before?
Correct. So I think, I believe the CIPC supported thirty thousand dollars in athletics, about fifteen thousand dollars came out of athletics. Now, back then, they were, it was about forty-five thousand.
Yeah, it's two thirds, one third.
Yeah.
I'm just, because I was just wondering if we should submit the entire amount, and then just, just to say, again, I just hate, I hate using user fees and things like that to cover.
Right. I do think.
Vehicles when, yeah.
I believe that did help get it across the finish line before, I think, that there was a comment.
Well, and, and, and again, like, just the three-year payback is a good reason for it as well. I just, I'm just wondering strategically if we should put the full amount in. I think we should at least identify the full amount.
Okay.
And.
Yep.
E- even if, say, like, we're open to, you know, that they, they've agreed to kick in or whatever, I think that should be clarified. And in terms of order, I think the hood roof obviously is a priority, I think devices are a priority. I personally would probably move track and tennis down to the bottom and hope for like a, hope for an agreement with, with other groups on that one, just so that we can prioritize the bus and.
Okay.
Maybe the studio, maybe the TV studio last, but like, the bus just seems like a no-brainer.
Yep.
Just because it'll pay back, and if we're continuing to ask people for more fees, to then, you know, to be paying for bus rentals when you can pay it back in two or three years. So that would be my only thing, is like, I would, I would probably have moved down that one.
Yep.
Maybe TV studio last, because we don't even know the, the cost yet still, but, um.
I, I would argue, uh, so, I would differ a little. Um, although, I agree with the TV studio, given the, uh, the use of the track and the, um, and the tennis courts beyond just the school, I think that, that to me is a, is a pretty good reason to keep it up pretty high.
But I think the problem is that if you go down the list, like, I don't know that they're going to get to the forty thousand, if you see that there. So like, if you, again, if you do a priority list, you put that a little bit lower, and then other people are in favor with that, the argument would be okay if you fund that one, fund the three above it as well. And I think that has mattered at times here and there, where like, you're trying to say like, yeah, and, and again, just from a, I just feel like if you get the four hundred and you get seventy-five, then you get one eighty-five, I just think they're going to end there. Whereas if the forty's above that, maybe we get the forty and we get the one eighty-five, but we don't get the TV studio, so.
I mean, I think the, the important distinction, though, I mean, as CIP, as it's, we go through, you're going to rank each and every one of these projects.
Individually.
Individually.
Correct.
So the order.
Correct.
It, it doesn't really matter.
It doesn't really matter at the end of the day, but.
The order that we submitted in doesn't have anything.
No, because a lot of it will be, like, so for instance, if we have some in free cash that we may transfer over, that can cover two projects, and there's a lot of prioritization from that, you know, from that perspective as well.
But if you look at it from a school perspective, what does the school need? I think, you know, our, our budgets are getting so tight right now to like, continue to spend twenty thousand dollars on rentals, you know, each year, and if it's a three-year payback, I just think like, doing that sooner rather than later, so that we're not asking the performing arts to take twenty thousand dollars out of their accounts every year. It should be a priority, um, so, and I'm not saying we shouldn't try to get the track as well.
No, I.
I just think that's a priority that like.
Yeah, that's fine.
Where we could just, and again, they're going to rank them as they're going to rank them either way. And we're saying that like, they're willing to put in basically a year of rentals or a year and a half of rentals to do it themselves anyways.
Right.
But they just need a little bit of help.
I mean, from a ROI perspective, the bus, I, that should have no issue getting through CIPC.
Right, that's what I would hope and so.
That's fine.
We don't have Mr. Sutherland arguing this year.
We have an upgrade this year.
We, we got a downgrade, so I, we're, we're, we're going to be in trouble, but.
Okay, I can make that switch, that's the consensus.
So just to clarify, the, the forty thou, or the twenty-five to thirty thousand would come from user fees?
Would come from money in the performing arts revolving account, which is generally through user fees and ticket sales.
And fundraising.
Okay, and the TV studio, is that the middle school and the high school? It's both, okay. And is it just for, I know there's like a video production course, is it just for the video production course or it's for the extracurricular for the broadcasting and?
Currently, it's used for courses that are sort of after school requirements.
Okay.
And, and I would just clarify, on the bus, it's a seventy, it's a seventy-five thousand dollar.
Yes, I think when I pulled off that sheet that goes to them, that was spelled out, but yes.
And I, I, I would also maybe even suggest two thirds, one third, like we did the last time. So it'd be fifty, a fifty thousand dollar request.
Okay.
Twenty-five from there.
I can.
Again, like, yeah.
That, the desire.
Well, you said the last time it was forty-five, it was thirty and fifteen.
It was, yeah, it was thirty and fifteen.
So I would, I would try to do the same thing, two thirds, one third.
Okay.
And so if you think it's going to be seventy-five, do fifty.
Twenty-five.
And then twenty-five from user fees.
Yep.
Rather than more like fifty-fifty.
Okay, yeah, I can, I can, that makes sense to me.
In keeping with what we did last time.
I'm just trying to find that elasticity of getting that through.
I'll just say, for the TV studio, I think it's worth, Noel, maybe also as a part of, you're on the North Cam board, maybe to discuss with them if there's support. They've given us some troubleshooting, but I think it might be worth having that conversation a little bit about equipment and just, you know, as we identify the need to see if there's any support that, that can come from the town that way as well.
I, I wonder if there's any outside, like, robotics classes or semi, I don't know, any, any sort of local areas that would, I don't know, private businesses that would donate something for it, but, I don't know. I don't know, we get, I mean.
Worth a job.
We get donations sometimes and it just seems like hardware is something that might be able to be donated, but, I don't know.
Don't work for HP anymore.
Sorry. Would the class, is there any risk of classes not happening if this is not fixed immediately?
They, they are currently functioning, they, the classes operate as TV but also video production. So they just lean more in the video production as opposed to, this is really the equipment that runs the studio itself for the, for this, you know, the, the experience of actually running a TV studio. So when the equipment doesn't function properly, they shift more towards doing video editing, so. The classes would still run, but eventually would have to shift. And it's a pretty valuable experience to be able to, to do the full TV program, so. And we, we are looking to expand that in the future, so.
And what year is that class, third class? Seventh, sixth and seventh or something?
I know that it starts, I think they have an option in six, seven and eight, right?
They do, yeah.
And then, and then in high school, there's.
Children, just saying.
Yeah, there's classes in high school and, you know, we've, we've talked a lot about wanting to have an advanced second.
Right.
Some of you know that's my background and it's always been my dream to have those kind of courses replicated, so.
Yeah.
Any other comments on this? If not, I would suggest we vote to approve as amended.
As amended, yes.
Can we get a motion?
Move to approve the capital improvement plan as amended.
We have a motion, we have a second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all that approve, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approve five-zero.
Great, thank you.
No, thank you.
As always, very detailed, very well thought out, so thank you. All right, back up to routine matters, I don't think we have any minutes at this time, we're good there? And then budget update, which I believe we sort of already got.
You did, there, there was a supplemental handout and report.
Yep.
Which is, comes, becomes quarterly. So the student activity quarter one report for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six was in the packet. This reflects activity July one through September thirtieth. So you're really looking at certified reconciled quarterly account balances, listing of the active accounts at both the, the middle school and the high school as well as the elementary schools, the certified balances are listed. What we have to do annually according to the student activity regulations is do approve the list of student activity accounts at both the high school and the middle school who have the various sub-accounts. So that is a, a policy and a regulation of student activity accounts. So typically, when this first quarterly report is presented and discussed, we request a motion, similar to one listed in the memorandum that just documents that these would be the active accounts going, going forward for this year. So we'll be looking for that motion as well this evening and that, that, that's a, just an annual motion that needs to happen.
Good. Ready for motion?
Yeah, sure.
I move that the school committee vote to approve the list of active student activity accounts at the high school and middle school for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year as presented by the administration.
We have a motion, we have a second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all that approve, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, five-zero.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Awesome, staffing.
Thank you, so we have a new hire at replacing someone at the hood school. That's Blaine Wiley, paraprofessional for special education and Mr. Jose Gonzalez, custodian second shift in the district. And we did have a paraprofessional leave the district, Mr. Patty Petricina.
Nice. Excellent, bids and donations.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of five hundred twelve dollars from Robert Romeo to be used towards the girls' basketball team shooting shirts at the high school.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Five-zero. Great, we have no grants at this time or overnight trip requests unless I'm missing something. Excellent, and then social media.
I didn't have anything specific, I don't know if we want to get anything out from the, a summary of the second meeting or not.
I don't know about that, but.
Yeah, that's a little.
May, maybe capital projects.
Yeah, that'd be the one.
Maybe some of the capital projects, things that are going on and, and maybe even highlighting, you know, like, trying to get like a van where it'll save, it'll save money, you know? Kind of like about how we're trying to find ways to save, you know, budget by investing in things that'll pay back in three years.
I like how we publicly say what, what is the message we're trying to get across.
More people will see his post and hear us say that at the meeting, I guarantee you that.
That is true, uh, no, I agree with that.
I mean, Master Spicap visited for an hour, so we got a long time to talk, what else we got on social media?
Yeah, um, no, I, I agree with that, I, but I definitely would not go something as complicated or as long as a.
Say no more, Jeff, say no more.
Great. Okay, um, why don't we go on to the subcommittee updates, athletics subcommittee, which met on November eighteen.
I came late.
I wasn't in attendance, so.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Good showing, excellent. All right.
Dr. Daley, do you have anything from athletics subcommittee?
Sure, so we had a, we had a review of the, the fall sports.
Yep.
Updates on all that, we had, as you heard tonight, a lot of our teams did very well this season. We had an update.
Talk about an understatement.
We had competing up through the weekend, obviously cheerleading and football. We had that recognition just the other day, which was great as well. They recognized athletics championships from last year as well as performing arts notorious as well. Winter sports update, we have about two hundred and twenty-eight registrations so far. We are looking for some eighth grade waivers, some co-ops for girls' ice hockey, co-ed swimming and boys' ice hockey. We did a few updates on the projects, some of what you heard tonight, the, the track and the tennis courts. We, we have an ongoing discussion around advertising revenues and what that would look like. I know a lot of athletic complexes are turning towards more banners and posters and we're talking about what that, we're also talking about it through policy subcommittee, what that would look like for us. There's also some questions around, you know, how that revenue could even work given the ownership of the, of the field. So there, there's some questions there that we're still exploring and looking that over as well. We did talk about the gym resurfacing, the short-term piece of it, which has just occurred and how that's going to shift to the summer. But as Michael alluded to, that there is a larger resurfacing project that's coming up in the, in the future as, through the capital plan. And the Snap Raise app is now live, is, you know, Mr. Campabasso, I think, I just want to give him a shout out. I'm receiving a lot of emails about his communication, I think he's done a fantastic job streamlining, kind of saying, here's all the great events this weekend. And even there was a very difficult situation with some banners being taken that he addressed, you know, cooperation with the high school administration. Mr. Campabasso communicated out. A few community members took some time just to reach out to me, just to applaud the way he communicated such a difficult subject and turned it into a learning, a lifelong learning lesson. So if you're not familiar, there were some posters that were taken from the fields and they were not recovered. But we did get some donations and some support from, from some community members and from families to try to replace that. But it was well communicated out. But the Snap Raise app is another, it's an app that you can download on your phone right now that has all of the athletic information, games, schedules, links to live streams, all within one app. There are some additional possible in-app costs for like the live streams, unfortunately, it's not all free. But it's sort of an all-in-one application. I think that was everything discussed, Michael, is there anything else?
No, I.
We reviewed the budget obviously as well.
You know, I think the, the app is great, you should all, all download it.
What is the app?
If you just put in North Reading Hornets to the app store, it comes right up.
Yeah, it's called Snap Raise App, I believe is the, but it's, North Reading Hornets will come right up. I had to update my phone software to download it.
Yeah.
Once you do that, it works great.
All right. All right, policy subcommittee, I'm pretty sure we know what you guys have been talking about, but anything else?
Just that, yeah, that's what I figured.
Great Friday night with Dr. Daley and Jennifer going through graduation requirements.
I can only imagine.
There's one other piece that we discussed there, the, the, the policy JBCF that we voted on last time was submitted to DESI. It's approved, it was approved contingent upon, we had to add the words October fifteenth where we just stated annually. So they wanted us to be specific. I guess the question I just have for the group is, so I, I did that update and resubmitted because I, I didn't want to, you know, keep bringing it back. Then they tell me, oh, and you're going to do this, and you're going to, right? So I guess the question just for the group, the process, you know, is that a, a nominal change there? Or do we need any kind of approval if that goes through? It's just adding a specific date.
I'm not concerned with it if others are okay with it too. I think it's, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's the ongoing conundrum is as we make these policies more detailed, it's, otherwise, we're just going to be doing first and second readings every meeting on the same policy multiple times a year.
Yeah.
I just thought it was good to discuss and now we have done, so thank you very much.
I think, I think if we thought it changed enough, I mean, if you're okay, Jeff, I think we would just bring it up as a, as a subcommittee saying we think we need to re.
That's fine.
Okay.
Or you could just throw it in, it's like, when your next time you're doing policies and say, here's five other ones that you can just want to do quickly if you ever want.
That's fine. All right, for the subcommittee schedule, the finance planning team is meeting on December fifth. Fine Arts Subcommittee, December ninth, and Athletics Subcommittee after the New Year, January thirteenth. Brings us to the administrative reports.
Just two quick updates, the reg, nine-one-one has switched to a regional dispatch and this is now effective, went into effect on November eighteenth. The North Shore Regional Emergency Communication Center is now the public safety answering point for police, fire and will answer nine-one-one calls. And so we've been working with our school safety team, police, fire, to make sure all of our processes and protocols are transferred and communicated. And we have a scheduled visit to that site with our school safety team members. Some of our principals, assistant principals, directors going to attend that as well, just to get a, a feel of the, the layout of the, the equipment and that information. And if any school committee members were interested in joining us, you can let me know and I'd be happy to have you come along as well.
Dr. Daley, on that point, I might have a couple of questions that shouldn't be here. Maybe if next time we have like a executive session, just put school, school safety on it and to make sure we discuss anything that's related to safety related to it. I don't know that it's urgent to like, schedule a meeting right the second, but the next time we're going to have an executive session, if you could maybe put school safety on there, just as something to think about.
Sounds good. And then as Mr. Connelly alluded to earlier, there is a meeting on December twelfth, just as an update for MSBA, where we will be learning more whether we are invited into that program. My understanding is if we are invited in at that time, then there's a certain amount of time that we would be gathering information to, to complete some paperwork to figure out what it would cost for a feasibility study. That's one of the major pieces that we would look to do if we were to continue forward with that steps. So a lot to be learned on December twelfth. I will be attending, it's a virtual meeting, I will be attending.
We may actually want to do an executive committee on December eighth.
I think that might actually be a good time as we start going into contract discussions and things like that.
Yes, yeah, I think I will probably, there's a few items for that, I guess.
Yep.
And that too.
Yep.
Okay, um, any correspondence, I don't see any at this time. Excellent, for future business, as I just mentioned, we have a December eighth meeting where we're going to talk about the student services presentation. We have just, January twelfth, when we'll get the twenty-thirty updates for NRPS twenty-thirty updates, which is great. And January twenty-sixth, where we'll have the high school presentation and high school program of studies. And I'm pretty sure we'll get updates by then of, of where we're going for budget too, I think somewhere in there. We'll, we'll probably talk budget again, but all that's good. Excellent. Awesome. Anything else, missing anything? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Wow.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Five-zero.